Planning Commission is now open. Now we have roll call, please.
Yes, so Chair Natasha Boss is absent, so Vice Chair Joan Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner John Dynan. Commissioner Ben Rubin. Commissioner Tidy Zamora.
Here.
And Commissioner, our alternate Steve Link is in the audience and Commissioner alternate Sid Michael Sid Alterman.
Here.
Thank you. Now conflict of interest, any planning commissioner, member of staff, who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Public comments and no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during the time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the planning commission members and refer to the last page of this agenda for the public comment procedures via Zoom. No public comments?
That's within the Riverwalk specific plan project area. I want to talk to you tonight about my concern about a lack of transparency in this process. First of all, the residents who are directly affected by this proposed specific plan project were not notified about it when the notice of preparation came out. We, most of us read about it on the front page of the Modesto B. In talking with your planning director, the city did recommend to the project proponent that we be notified, but they chose not to. The city could have required the project proponent to notify those affected, but they did not. So bottom line is, we weren't notified. We read about it on the front page of the B. Even more concerning than that is to have learned subsequent to that, that the city of Riverbank included in their 2019, that's important because that's two years before the project was announced in the NLP. Two years before that, the city adopted their strategic plan, which included implementing the Riverwalk project. Then when the strategic plan was updated two years later, that was retained. So two years prior, before those of us directly affected were notified or became aware, it was already a goal in the city's strategic plan, very concerning. Another concern about lack of transparency was when the project proponent had neighborhood meetings. Separate neighborhood meetings were held for those in River Heights and those of us who live in the McHenry corridor. And neither was, the meetings were held separately and neither was allowed to attend each other's meetings. In fact, we were expressly prohibited from attending each other's meetings and told that if you showed up, you would be turned away. Okay, another very concerning part of the lack of transparency. Moving forward, we're very, very concerned about this project and we encourage you to vote no when it comes before you, when it's considered. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Dan Whitstone. I live at seventy eight thirty, excuse me, seventy eight twenty four McHenry Avenue. My property overlooks the Riverwalk project, proposed Riverwalk project. The river basin, again, it's just a wonderful area down there. Of course, we've talked about how much of a prime ag land it is. I guess one of my main concerns is that it's, you know, if this comes before you, take a look at how far it is from the city limits. You know, let's not jump out a couple of miles and, you know, start developing, putting in a lot of houses and then, you know, start filling backwards. Let's, let's do infill and fill along the edges and work our way out, okay? This, you know, this area should be generations from being developed. So please take a close look at that when it becomes before you. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Karen Canrato. I also live in the area in Modesto address, but on the area that's affected by this proposed development. My, my presentation tonight will be very similar to the one I gave to the city council last week. I would like to mention to all of you that there's an excellent article on the proposed Riverwalk project that was published Sunday, May seventh in the Modesto B. It clearly states the multitude of reasons the Riverwalk proposed project should not exist. I'm hoping all of you take the time to read it. We strongly oppose the proposed project for reasons we have mentioned before that include building homes and commercial buildings on prime agricultural land in a flood plain. And this was a year where we had a huge amount of rain, as you know, in a short period of time. Atmospheric rivers dump huge amounts of rain in a short period of time and are predicted to be bigger and wetter than in the past years. We won't have them every year, but when we do, they are going to dump more rain that is predicted. Snowfall was also significant this year, as all of you I'm sure are aware, which is also unpredictable for when. Those that live along the Stanislaus River were lucky this year. New Maloney's Dam was extremely low, which meant it had a lot of capacity for absorbing both the rain and the snow melt. We did not experience the flooding that would have occurred had Maloney's already been full or near full. How often will be lucky enough to have those circumstances if we have a potential flooding situation? On another important note, please consider the impact this proposed project would have on the river, the river forest and the wildlife corridors and the wildlife itself. This project is adjacent, this proposed project is adjacent to the Stanislaus River. There are concerns with urban sprawl, leapfrogging and making isolated islands, county islands. We also are concerned with not using poorer soils already available to the city of Riverbank for housing needs. There continue to be, there continue to be infrastructure concerns, including traffic, water, sewer, garbage and other pollution issues. Please research and consider all the negative effects and impacts this proposed project will have on this community as well as your neighboring cities, Oakdale, Modesto, Ripon, Escalon, et cetera. Please recommend no on this Riverwalk proposal when it comes in front of you. And as always, thank you for your time.
Good evening, planning commissioners, staff and citizens. I'm Milt Treeweiler. I'm a lifetime resident of Stanislaus County. I'm going to talk about the most important resource we have in Stanislaus County. Let me start by asking some questions. What do we need to stay alive? We need clean air, clean water and food. Where do we get, where do we grow food? We grow food on farmland. Where is the best farmland? The best farmland is here in Stanislaus County. Stanislaus County has the best farmland in the world. Stanislaus County has the farmland, the climate and the water to grow food for the next 500 years or more. Our Stanislaus County forefathers were forward-looking and innovative. In eighteen eighty-seven, Turlock Irrigation District and Modesto Irrigation District became the first two irrigation districts in California. In a simplified manner, government is to serve the needs of the people. Unfortunately, some politicians have drifted away from serving the people to serving their own selfish desires. An example of politicians serving their own selfish desires is the proposed River, Riverbank Riverwalk project. This area's existing county zoning designation of the majority of the project is general agriculture A two forty with a small portion at A two ten. This general agricultural A two zone supports and enhances agriculture as predominant land use in the county. This district regulation is intended to protect open space lands pursuant to Government Code Section six five nine one zero. This is the best farmland in the world and Modesto Irrigation District has secured irrigation water already for this land for the next hundred years. I was, I did a tour of the dam and everything, so I know what I'm talking about in that regard. Okay, so what an intelligent and realistic goal would be is to freeze this farmland at its A two zoning designation for the next 200 years. It's hard to understand what some people are thinking of and what bad things mankind can do to itself. If you travel anywhere in the U.S. or the world, you'll be, you will know that this is the best farmland in the world. We must preserve this farmland to feed ourselves and our nation. I ask you to vote against this proposed project. Thank you.
Any additional public comments? Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Can we break it up and do the posting of the agenda and then do the minutes separate?
Will we amend that motion, please?
For posting of the agenda?
Yeah, I'll move to approve items two point one and two point two on the consent calendar. Second.
So roll call. Vice Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan. Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
Commissioner Zamora.
Yes.
And Commissioner Alterman.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved by, by though. Okay, so item two point three then.
Second.
Okay, roll call for Vice Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan. Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
Commissioner Zamora and Commissioner Alterman.
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the public hearing. The public notice for items three point one and three point two was published on May third, twenty twenty-three in the Riverbank News. Item three point one, variance zero one dash twenty twenty-three, department file twenty-three dash zero zero one one, Crossroads West Unit One slash DMG Development LP zero seven four zero two three zero five zero. This project is a proposed variance for an interior side setback for Lot fifty, fifty-five-ten Treehouse Lane. The lot is not square and narrows at one end. The proposed project will not have a significant effect on the environment and is categorically exempt under Article nineteen, Section one five three zero five, Minor Alterations in Land Use Limitations. A minor lot line adjustments, side yards and set back variances not resulting in the creation of any new parcel. Donna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, commissioners. I think that about says it all. Okay, as you had stated, this is a variance proposal to decrease an interior side setback on Lot fifty from five feet to four point sixteen feet. Here is a picture of the plot plan. Up there at the top, the yellow is the request and the setback directly beneath it is the one proposed to be four point one six feet. On the other side, you'll see that there is a ten-foot public utilities easement between the house and the back of sidewalk. So if the house were to be adjusted to give them a five-foot interior setback, it would have to encroach within the public utilities district or public utilities easement, excuse me. So pursuant to Riverbank Municipal Code, Section one five three point two one eight D, the planning commission shall make the following findings of fact in approving a variance. One, because of special circumstances applicable to the size, shape, topography, location or surroundings, by strictly applying the zoning ordinance, it deprives the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties and under identical zoning classifications. In order to put a house on here that would fit completely within the side property lines, the developer would have to come up with a new floor plan so that not only extends the amount of time that this piece of property could be developed, but also it's more time and money for the developer to get a house that specifically fits this lot. Two, the granting of the application is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of substantial property rights of the petitioner and will not constitute a grant of special privileges. He would just like to put a house here like on the other lots, nothing more, nothing less. The granting of such application will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, materially adversely affect the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood and will not, under circumstances of the particular case, be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injures to property or improvements in said neighborhood. Speaking with the Stanislaus County Fire, Fire District, they had stated that the one house adjacent to this property would have a five-foot setback. This setback could be approved at four point one six feet. The nine point one six feet would give fire department plenty of time, plenty of space to get between the houses to fight a fire or to answer a call for ambulance service, for example. As mentioned before, this does qualify for a categorical exemption, alter, alterations in land use limitations, which does specifically talk about side yard and setback variances as long as there's no new parcel created, and that is not happening in this case. So the recommendation is to approve the variance to decrease the setback on Lot fifty from five feet to four point sixteen feet based upon the findings contained in Resolution twenty twenty-three zero zero five. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Donna, I just have one question. You had the plot plan up there. There's no HVAC compressors or other like pop-outs on that side of the house, right, that would restrict that four point one six any further?
The AC units are not allowed in the five-foot setbacks.
Okay, I, I see where it's up there. And then I guess the only other thing I was thinking about was drainage, but that is a corner lot, so the backyard would drain to the side street, so.
And I think the intrusion, excuse me, you see there is just a little cement pad coming out of the garage door there.
Probably the garage, too. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments or questions about this project? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Will we approve Resolution two zero two three dash zero zero five?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. Vice Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
Commissioner Zamora.
Yes.
Commissioner Alterman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item three point two, the architecture and site plan review of zero six twenty twenty-three, department file twenty-three dash zero zero one three, the Heritage slash DR Horton dash APN zero six two zero two oh zero zero one. Donna?
Hello again. You may remember the Heritage from about halfway through last year. They did come forward for architectural insight plan review when SCM Homes was going to develop the property. SCM is doing the infrastructure, but they've decided to sell the finished lots to DR Horton Bay Area in order to construct the homes. So because they have different houses, they have to come back through planning commission for this type of review. So here's the location. You can see Sierra Avenue is on the north side and Central Avenue is on the right side there. So this whole kind of graded area is, actually has a, has most of their infrastructure in right now. So the project consists of the architectural and site plan review for forty-seven single-family residences known as the Heritage. The whole site itself is located at six four four eight Claus Road, but that large parcel through other entitlements has been split in two. So the Heritage is on the east side of this formerly large parcel and Summer Fair, the Concierge Storage Facility will be on the west side of this big parcel that's been split. SCM Homes does have a development agreement that was approved by the city council in May of twenty twenty-two, which enabled them to move forward and put in the infrastructure. So as I mentioned, Steve Mothersell is constructing the infrastructure and is in contract to sell the property to DR Horton Bay. Here is a sample of the subdivision map. As you can see, it does have one street that comes through and angles off to the side as well as a cul-de-sac in the very center. Off to the left where you see that north arrow, that's where the Summer Fair Concierge Storage Facility will be. Here is a development plan showing, they have two sets of floor plans and the red is one of the floor plans, the green is the other, and they are also utilizing the mirror image. So you basically have four house and four floor plans that are put here in this particular order to keep from having two identical plans next to each other. So here is a schematic street scene that kind of shows the houses. These are both models plus their mirror images. So with the different architectural features we'll be talking about, it does really set the different houses apart. They don't look identical. Here's the floor plan for fifteen eighty, fifteen hundred and eighty-three square feet. As you can see, it is a two-story. Here's the roof plan that also gives some architectural differences to the different houses. Here are the front elevations. As you can see, there's some differences in the roof, gables versus hip. You have different treatments for the front door and some have shingles, some have tiles. We also have shutters on some and decorative features on others as well as the different color palettes that they're able to take advantage of. Here is the Spanish elevation. You see the rounded entryway as well as some of the other architectural features that kind of bring out that Spanish flavor. Here's a traditional elevation. Here is the larger floor plan, the one thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine square foot plan. It has an additional bedroom over the other floor plan. As you can see, there are differences in the roof plans here as well. Their front elevations with some of the differences that make each house unique. The Spanish elevation, again, you do have some rounded doorways, but there are other features that differentiate it from the fifteen hundred square foot plan. Here's the traditional elevation. With CEQA, the architectural and site plan review of dwelling units for an already approved tentative map is not a project pursuant to CEQA guidelines. So staff recommends that you approve the architectural and site plan review based upon the findings contained in Resolution twenty twenty-three zero zero six. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question. I just want to make sure I have it correctly. The Concierge RV area is going to go all the way out to Claus Road?
Yes, it will be from the west property line of this subdivision to Claus Road. And as part of that project, they are constructing Sierra from the subdivision to Claus as well. So there will be that, that road will break through and allow these folks not only to come down Sierra to get to the rest of the city, but they'll be able to go up Central Avenue to either Atchison or to Santa Fe. Or they could go east over by Diamond Bar East and come out on Snedeker as well. Welcome.
Open the public hearing. Does anyone have questions or wish to make a comment?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Adam Lind. I'm with DR Horton. My first want to thank you guys all for reviewing the architecture. I also want to thank Donna and staff for really guiding us through the process to Riverbank and being available for us. So really appreciate that. I'm personally very excited about this project. I grew up in Modesto, still a local resident here, so very excited about that. We've reviewed the conditions and we're ready to adhere to them and I'm available for questions.
Else? And we'll close the public hearing. We have a vote?
I make a motion that we approve item three point two on the agenda.
Okay, roll call. Vice Chair Stewart? Commissioner Dinen? Commissioner Ruben?
Yes.
Commissioner Zamora?
Yes.
And Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Okay, it's approved, five oh.
Comments? County referrals?
I have no county referrals at this time.
Staff comments?
Only that we have a lovely downtown street fair going on tonight, and I'm hoping people have a chance to stop by and see some of the vendors. There's a lot of people here, and it should be a good time this evening. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
World's record.